Right after the finance committee's meeting, so we'd like to keep the touch, I mean, keep following that. Again, this is the Town of Dayton Board of Selectmen's regular meeting. Again, it was Wednesday, the 28th at 6:30. It's a hybrid meeting via Zoom in person at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. And again, I'd like to give the meeting ID, the passcode and the phone number. The meeting ID number is 876-7382-0901. The passcode is 612-034. And the phone number is 309-205-3325. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. We've already done the pledge of allegiance, so we've already done the roll call, so we're going to get right into appointments, which first one is to review, discuss, and act appointment of Board of Selectmen liaison to the Conservation Commission. Lenny, you want to take this one?
I, over the past two years, attended most of the conservation meetings. So that we don't run into a problem with an open meeting law violation, I ask that the position of liaison to the Conservation Commission be created. That's a non-voting position. That is to help streamline communication between the Board of Selectmen's office and conservation. It's also to report back to the public the goings-on deliberations of conservation, as we have many other liaisons, ADA, open space, that I'll be talking about later this evening. I'm asking if we could do the same for conservation.
Sure. And I understand that you would like to be that member of the Board of Selectmen?
I would.
Okay.
So, in kind.
Absolutely. Do we have a nomination on the floor?
Yes, I'd like to motion that we have Lenny be the liaison for the Conservation Commission.
And I'm going to step down his chair and second that motion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Peter Carron is an aye.
And I abstate.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this.
Good luck.
Nicole, thank you.
Review, discuss, and act appointment of Paul Reynolds as a voting member of the Conservation Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Paul Reynolds as a voting member of the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Congratulations, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate this.
Review, discuss, and act appointment of David Phillips as Conservation Commission representative to the Stormwater Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Phillips as a Conservation Commission representative to the Stormwater Committee.
I'd like to second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Carron is an aye. Thank you. This next issue that we have, not an issue, the Historical Commission that's coming up, I'm going to make this comment, and you can take it the way you want to, but unfortunately Zach Carron is a son of mine.
Oh, thanks.
Because of that, I cannot hear this, this next appointment. So with the clerk taking over, I am going to reduce myself from this.
So we're going to do D, Patricia Gales, Historical Commission. We're going to review, discuss, act the request to appoint Zachary Carron to the Historical Commission. Like to open it up to any discussion?
Mrs. Gales, do you have any?
Zach attended our meeting in June, and he's very interested in history of Dayton. Has a wealth of knowledge of history stuff, you know, nationally. And seemed very interested, very active. We hope he brings some new blood and younger new points to the committee. So we look forward to having him on.
You kind of answered my question. I was going to ask him why he picked Historical. Not that I wouldn't pick the Historical Commission, but as a younger gentleman, why you had, that had come to heart?
I just have, because of local history, and I, you know, who knows, there is a vacant spot, so I thought I'd give you a way to get involved.
That's great. Thank you. Selectmen Hall, do you have any?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Zachary Carron to the Historical Commission.
I will s- I will second aye. Any further discussion? A vote?
Aye.
And I will aye as well.
Zach, congratulations. I would like to remind all appointees this evening, you must see the town clerk to be sworn in. Please fulfill that obligation. Technically, you're not an official member. And if someone should challenge a vote at a meeting, especially con, where those things can end up in court, very important you take care of that little piece.
Pat Gales, you have a update for us? Thanks, Zach.
I'm Pat Gales, the chair of the Historical Commission, and I just have a couple of things to update you on. First of all, as you know, we did a community-wide survey of the historic properties, and finished that last summer, I guess it was now. And three of the prop- three areas were identified as historically significant. The lower four corners, which is Elm Street and Main Street, you know, where the crossroads are, probably down to just past the library on Main Street, the house on the corner of Main and Elm, the gray house, was Brown's Tavern. Couple of houses on Main Street going towards the dam, and then some houses to Mendoza's Farm, and the Community Church, Rufus Marsh, Whitmarsh's House, and the cemetery are considered in this area. So it's a very historic, significant area to our history in town. The other one was the brick area, which is at Center Street and Pine Street, and in the South Dayton area along Pleasant Street and Lower Main Street. We already have two historic National Register historic places, Water Street, the Coram Shipyard, and on Pleasant Street, the Wharf District. So in our process with the survey, our preservation consultant, Stacy Spies, filled out a National Register of Historic Places Criteria Statement Form for each of those areas. And she texts off the criteria why, in her opinion, that these areas are eligible to be considered for the National Register. So based on that information, the commission has requested that the Massachusetts Historical Commission evaluate the lower four corners area. We decided to start with that area for the National Register of Historic Places eligibility. This is the first step in a long process. I was looking at the folders on our other two historic districts. The Wharf District, it looked like once they became eligible, the process was three years. Even for the Mass Historical Commission to identify as potentially eligible.
Right after the Finance Committee's meeting, so we'd like to keep the touch, I mean, keep following that. Again, this is the Town of Dayton Board of Selectmen's regular meeting. Again, it was Wednesday, the 28th at 6:30. It's a hybrid meeting via Zoom in and person at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. And again, I'd like to give the meeting ID, the passcode, and the phone number. The meeting ID number is 876-7382-0901. The passcode is 612-034, and the phone number is 309-205-3325. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. We've already done the Pledge of Allegiance, so we've already done the roll call, so we're going to get right into appointments, which first one is to review, discuss, and act appointment of Board of Selectmen liaison to the Conservation Commission. Lenny, you want to take this one?
I, over the past two years, attended most of the Conservation meetings. So that we don't run into a problem with an open meeting law violation, I ask that the position of liaison to the Conservation Commission be created. That's a non-voting position. That is to help streamline communication between the Board of Selectmen's office and conservation. It's also to report back to the public the goings-on deliberations of conservation, as we have many other liaisons, ADA, open space, that I'll be talking about later this evening. I'm asking if we could do the same for conservation.
Sure. And I understand that you would like to be that member of the Board of Selectmen?
I would have.
Okay.
So, in kind.
Absolutely. Do we have a nomination on the floor?
Yes, I'd like to motion that we have Lenny be the liaison for the Conservation Commission.
And I'm going to step down his chair and second that motion. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye.
And I abstate.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this.
Good luck.
Nicole, thank you.
Review, discuss, and act appointment of Paul Reynolds as a voting member of the Conservation Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Paul Reynolds as a voting member of the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Congratulations, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I really appreciate it.
Review, discuss, and act appointment of David Phillips as Conservation Commission representative to the Stormwater Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Phillips as a Conservation Commission representative to the Stormwater Committee.
I'd like to second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you. This next issue that we have, not an issue, the Historical Commission that's coming up, I'm going to make this comment, and you can take it the way you want to, but unfortunately Zach Karen is a son of mine.
Oh, thanks.
Because of that, I cannot hear this, this next appointment. So, with the clerk taking over, I am going to reduce myself from this.
So, we're going to do D, Patricia Gales, Historical Commission. We're going to review, discuss, act the request to appoint Zachary Karen to the Historical Commission. Like to open it up to any discussion?
Mrs. Gales, do you have any?
Zach attended our meeting in June, and he's very interested in history of Dayton. Has a wealth of knowledge of history stuff, you know, nationally, and seemed very interested, very active. We hope he brings some new blood and younger new points to the committee. So, we look forward to having him on.
He kind of answered my question. I was going to ask him why he picked Historical, not that I wouldn't pick the Historical Commission, but as a younger gentleman, why you had, that had come to heart.
I just have, because of local history, and I, you know, who knows, there's a vacant spot, so I thought I'd give you a way to get involved.
That's great. Thank you. Selectmen Hall, do you have any?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Zachary Karen to the Historical Commission.
I will s- I will second that. Any further discussion? A vote?
Aye.
And I will aye as well.
Zach, congratulations. I would like to remind all appointees this evening, you must see the town clerk to be sworn in. Please fulfill that obligation. Technically, you're not an official member. And if someone should challenge a vote at a meeting, especially Con, where those things can end up in court, very important, you take care of that little piece.
Pat Gales, you have a update for us? Thanks, Zach.
I'm Pat Gales, the Chair of the Historical Commission, and I just have a couple of things to update you on. First of all, as you know, we did a community-wide survey of the historic properties, and finished that last summer, I guess it was now. And three of the prop- three areas were identified as historically significant. The lower four corners, which is Elm Street and Main Street, you know, where the crossroads are, probably down to just past the library on Main Street, the house on the corner of Main and Elm, the Gray House, was Brown's Tavern, a couple of houses on Main Street going towards the dam, and then some houses to Mendoza's Farm, and the Community Church, Rufus March- Whitmarsh's House, and the cemetery are considered in this area. So, it's a very historic, significant area to our history in town. The other one was the Brick Area, which is at Center Street and Pine Street, and in the South Dayton area along Pleasant Street and Lower Main Street. We already have two historic, National Register Historic Places, Water Street, the Coram Shipyard, and on Pleasant Street, the Wharf District. So, in our process with the survey, our preservation consultant, Stacy Spies, filled out a National Register of Historic Places Criteria Statement Form for each of those areas. And she takes off the criteria why, in her opinion, that these areas are eligible to be considered for the National Register. So, based on that information, the Commission has requested that the Massachusetts Historical Commission evaluate the lower four corners area. We decided to start with that area for the National Register of Historic Places eligibility. This is the first step in a long process. I was looking at the folders on our other two historic districts. The Wharf District, it looked like once they became eligible, the process was three years. Even for the Mass Historical Commission to identify as potentially eligible, will probably take nine months to 12 months. So, it's a long process. But it's the first steps. If the area is considered eligible, if there is a nonprofit or some businesses in that area, they then become, they're able to apply for some grants. So, it opens up some grant money for those kinds of businesses. So, the, what is the National Register of Historic Places? It's the list of the historic places that are worthy of preservation, and it's a federal program under the National Park System. And it's a preservation planning tool. So, it encourages preservation, but it doesn't guarantee that the listed properties will be preserved. So, there's no, there's no requirements. It's not like having a local bylaw in a local historic district. The owners still have the rights to do whatever they want with their properties, or not with their properties. And as I said, and also if the properties are owned by a municipality, then we're also able to apply for grants for the town, too. So, within that district, there isn't really a town one. But if we start with South Dayton, oh yes, there is, in the, in the lower four corners, the Carnegie Building is in that area. If we get eligibility, that building would be opened up for some grant money. And there's also some federal tax provisions, too, that are listed, especially for income-producing properties. So, at this point, we're only seeking the National Register of Historic Places designation. And as I mentioned, you know, another preservation tool is the local historic district. That's established by town law, and is certainly worthy of discussion at a later date. And I did bring some informational sheets for you, so that everyone has the information. These are also, you can find through the Mass Historical Commission online, but sometimes I like paper.
You don't mind this last one?
Nope, thank you. So, that's the update on our survey so far. The survey in North Dayton is continuing. We anticipate that that will be completed in September, so that's moving along. But our other news is that the Commission is fifty year, 50 years old today, or this year. In 1964, Heritage Committee was formed with the following members, Helen Lane, Elaine Varley, Charles Harris, Martha Campbell, and Helen Brown. And Elaine, Helen Lane spearheaded this committee. And it was charged with preserving Dayton's history. And Helen Lane has got to be like one of my models, because that woman was fantastic. She, we wouldn't know the facts that we know about Dayton's history, except for her. She wrote the history of Dayton. She drew maps of Dayton. She drew, went to all the cemeteries and drew the cemetery stones, and put the names and the dates on them, and just a fantastic amount of information that she is, she gave us and helped to preserve. So, the Heritage Committee was in existence until 1973, when the state enacted a general law for establishing historical commissions in cities and towns of Massachusetts. And this was in 1973, and it's Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8D, with the Commission members to be appointed by the Selectmen. So, Dayton did vote to establish a historical commission, and the first members were Helen Lane, Charles Harris, Robert McWork, Helen Brown, Dr. Rose Borges, Arthur Staples, and Elaine Varley. So, since we are 50 years old, we thought that we would honor this achievement in some way, given that we're historic, and we should be accumulating historic facts, came up with the idea to have a time capsule to be opened in the next 50 years. So, we're having discussions about the size of the capsule, which is somewhat dependent on cost, because they go from very tiny little ones, cylinder ones, to as big as you could possibly want. So, they go from like $36 to $2,000, so, but it has to be affordable, of course. Also being discussed is what's going to go into them. We've asked for some public input, and we have people giving suggestions. And also, where is it going to go? We've talked about being buried on town property somewhere. If you bury it, you have to make sure that it's water-seal tight, you know, so that you don't lose your preservation. How many time capsules do you read about they put in? Open them up, and everything is disintegrated because it got wet, or the bugs got in, or whatever. So, we've talked about that. We've also talked about possible placement in the vault with a note on it, do not touch, do not open until, you know, 50 years have gone by, or possibly even at the library at Smith Memorial Hall. So, what we're seeking from you is some input, your thoughts onto location that is feasible, and who we should follow up with. So, that's our question to you for that part. And I have one more thing, is the Helen Lane map. We received a map donated by Louise Freeman, which you accepted as a donation. As it turns out, this is a very good scan of Helen Lane's original map. She hand-painted him on material, and I believe, we estimate that there's like 12 to 14 of these that she did. She generally gave them to friends or people that she knew. So, these originals are out there. Some are still in Dayton, some are not. But the scan, when you first looked at it, it looked like it could be the material. That's how good the scan was. So, it is now framed. We had it framed by Riverside Art, and it's ready to be displayed, and it's gorgeous. So, that's our update.
So, you need suggestions from the public, pretty much, where we think, as well as the Selectmen, where we think this time capsule should go?
Where, yeah, where should it go? What would be the, the best, you know? And of course, if it is going, it's going to be on town property, so it would have to have your approval before we could place it anywhere.
So, your front yard is out?
Yeah, my front yard is out.
Obviously, I'm the liaison for the Historical Commission, and I was aware of this presentation tonight. And we've discussed as a board where we think it should be. Like she said, burying it comes with its own set of
Expense.
Expense.
Issues, yeah.
One of the things that was brought up was putting it at the new library in the basement. But again, it was also brought up that people think of a time capsule, and it's buried, and there's a certain amount of romance that goes with excavating this time capsule 50 years from now, which I plan on being around for. I don't know about you, Mr. Hall.
Yes, regarding the library, you're talking?
The new library.
The new library. I believe we cannot use the basement because of accessibility issues and fire code issues. So, you can talk to Mr. Agia, but I know he was pretty adamant that the basement couldn't be used.
Right, right. Unless we just like give it to him to put down there.
That trips a whole lot of additional expenses that right now
True.
Elevators won, fire protection system would then be, have to go in place. So, I don't think that would be
But even at the Carnegie Building, I mean, that is certainly still going to be a town meeting and still be used. So, that could, would even be an option.
So, you're, you're thinking of getting away from burying it?
Well, we go back and forth. You know, we, there's some of us that say it should be in the ground, because, you know, like Peter said, there's something about when you do a time capsule, you bury it, you know? But then it's the preservation of it. A lot, I think what's really going to drive it, too, is the expense of, of a capsule, because, Rafa, you started looking at some prices, you know, so it has to be affordable.
Would the Historical Society be amenable to placing it on their ground?
It wouldn't hurt to ask.
And the items going in the time capsule have, do we have a list of what is in there, going to be in there, or the suggestions?
We had, someone mentioned a cell phone, a mask, maps, programs from like the graduations at the schools this year, memorabilia like from the Cow Chip Festival, Strawberry Festival, town events, you know, events like, we had the teacher from the elementary school that was honored, events like that, the people that have been honored. So far, it's been more those kinds of things. Anything else?
A restaurant menu?
A restaurant menu.
Maybe a newspaper from?
Yeah, a newspaper, grocery flyers, because of course, what would be interesting to some is going to be what things cost in 2007, you know, '23, and what else would be?
Seventy-three.
Twenty seventy-three. So, the difference, you know, you're going to see a lot of differences.
The Segregated School, is that under the domain of the Historical Commission?
That's a town building.
So, it's the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Good idea.
Well, I see that as a wonderful historical site down the road. It's going to take some money, obviously, but it has great potential. You know, I drive down the end of Williams Street, and you see the old Hornbine School, and I just think
Yeah, yeah.
The history there, and the history over there is pretty incredible also.
We do have for the Segregated Schoolhouse for FY25, a request into the Capitol Outlay Committee to start looking at architectural issues, you know, for, for the Segregated Schoolhouse. So, it is on the radar.
And what was the other thing you asked us to look into? Time capsule?
Helen Lane map.
The what? Oh, the Helen Lane map, yeah, where we would like that.
Yes, where would we put it?
Well, when we first looked at it, we thought, you know, like, we looked around here, you know, in, in this building. Then we thought even Town Hall needs some pictures and stuff on the walls over at Town Hall. And I know at one of your meetings, you mentioned going to Smith Memorial Hall. So, it's a good size map, maybe just a little bit smaller than that map of Dayton.
It's very impressive.
It is.
Now, it's in the frame. I'm anxious to see it again. But I think it's something that we want to display somewhere.
I have an idea, but it might be a little controversial. In the Historical Museum, formerly known as the Carnegie Building.
Oh, you mean the Historical Commission spot?
Yes. You know, I was down in Yama, and I saw what they did with one of their buildings.
Yeah.
We had a meeting for the library for a grant.
That was a beautiful building.
Yes.
Yeah.
What they did with it, and they made it a museum, and a meeting place, and also something where they could do small cultural events.
Right.
Music, so.
Yeah, they did a nice job in that, that building. You know, I've, as you know, I've always advocated for the Historical Commission to be in the Carnegie Building. I think it's a perfect match, you know, so. And I'll continue advocating for that.
I support that.
So, just put those thinking caps on. If you come up with any ideas, you know, you can reach out to me and let us know.
Sure, we'll certainly take it under advisement.
Okay.
It's, it's the public input that, that we can generate just from tonight's meeting. It would be nice if
Right. Oh, the other
Who had ideas would like to share them with us.
Right. And the other thing I want to mention about the National Register eligibility, we will be reaching out to the property owners that are in that area to let them know what's going on, so that they will be informed also through, you know, communications from us. So, okay?
Well, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any public comment?
Well, we have public input coming up at the end, but sure, if you wanted to just
General Observation, to avoid flood zones, and the library, I believe, is in a flood zone.
New building?
No.
I believe it's the 500-year flood zone, so it's not the 50 years that we're
So, we could get to 50 years.
The most major impact zone.
We could, yeah. It's only 50 years we have to worry about.
Just to present off to you.
Yes, Nancy.
Correct. It was during Hurricane Carol. My brother-in-law
Wow.
was on Monte Coe Lane. When that flood came up, it came up Main Street, and it came up to the intersection of Main and Pleasant Streets. That wasn't a 500-year storm, but it was one of the bad hurricanes, as far as flooding went in Dayton.
Yeah.
So, that's, you're at that intersection.
Right.
Right. I know, I grew up on Pleasant Street, and my, we, we moved there in 1960, and we left for the hurricane in 1962. We never left again, because the water never came over up the street, the street. My mother's house was three houses in, and, you know, in 2010, when it poured, poured rain for days and days and days. I had water in my cellar. She had none. So, I think, you know, yeah, it is in a flood plain. Growing up there, you know, at 54, I think, was the last bad hurricane.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, yeah. That was the last bad one there. Certainly, there were other hurricanes, but in our, the experience that I had growing up there, we never had water, you know, past the backyards across, the houses across the street. But that's, you never know about Mother Nature either, so, anyway. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Next is item E, and I'm not going to butcher your name, but the CEO of Green International Associates would like to give us a demonstration, not a demonstration, a
Presentation.
Presentation.
So, just one, so just one thing, like, if I could introduce Mr. Shakur of Green International. Green, for actually more than the last three years now, Green International has, has had a very, has had a very, has had a very successful engagement and working relationship with the town. Green has done work with our Highway Department, actually led to the first, the first ever Complete Street Scan Award that the town received back in, I believe, 2018, 2019, in the amount of, I want to say about $150,000. And, and actually, for the last three years, has had an engagement with the Planning Board as well, to do, to do all the planning boards on cloud peer review engineering. The, the Planning Board engagement is now about to expire, and so really, in looking how, how we go forward, and how we go forward in planning, no pun intended, but how we go forward in planning, so and how we try to align the processes for the different types of projects and proposals coming before groups like the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, Conservation, Stormwater, and like etc., like a lot of them interact with each other, a lot of the applications interact with each other, something that an applicant may file with the Planning Board, and may also be presented to Congress on Stormwater and so forth. Like, in the past, we've, we have, we've had a semblance of having our, like, separate peer reviews that are completed, that when we go to have them aligned and really inform how, and really recommendations for these projects, and input that the peer reviews have found and are recommending for these projects, there have been some instances where the recommendations haven't aligned. There have als, there have also been instances where gaps in information have existed as well. So, in assessing how we go, how we go forward, and how we build on the engagement that we've had with Green International for the last three years, we wanted to see through the Board, so if we could have the opportunity, with the Board's blessing, sort of input to try to align these, to try to align these reviews, so the information that comes back from these reviews, it can anticipate and incorporate what a review might actually provide input relating to, I've got a planning board project, how that would affect, how that would affect conservation, so and Stormwater and so forth. But I'm not the expert here, so, so like, if you just want to really pick up on that, and, so, yeah, present really what we're proposing as a vision.
Before we do that, Mr. Hall?
Mr. Chairman, I am not sure what your format and plan for this evening is in regards to this presentation, but I would like to motion that public input be allowed at this juncture in regarding this issue.
You're talking after the presentation?
After the presentation.
Sure, we can do that. Is that okay?
I will accept, I will vote yes on that.
Okay.
Motion.
Oh, aye.
Peter Karen is an aye.
Thank you.
So we will add a public input right after this presentation?
Or specific I.
For this, one specific item?
Yeah, thank you.
Hi.
Hello, good evening. Uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity uh to talk about uh about our firm. Uh, as Michael mentioned, uh we have been working for the town uh for Complete Street and also last three years for to pro- uh provide peer review for Planning Board. So I just wanna briefly talk about our company, just, you know, a couple of minutes. So our company is, we are civil and structural engineering firm. Uh, we are multidisciplined firm, we have over a hundred and ten people uh in two offices, uh uh main office in Tewksbury, Massachusetts, and we also have Lincoln, Rhode Island office. So we do, uh, we mostly focus on the public sector clients. So most of our work, we do state agencies and municipality, actually all over New England. Uh, mostly Massachusetts, but we also do a lot of work in Rhode Island and Vermont as well. But we don't have a lot of pub- public clients, mostly, uh, I mean, uh, private clients, mostly public, you know, clients. Uh, what we do, we do transportation works, we do roadway, you know, studies and design tra- uh traffic signal intersections. We do a lot of our structural focused on the bridges, so we do a lot of bridges. We work all over the New England for that. And also we do civil site, uh, which means, uh, you know, civil engineering, site engineering. Uh, we also do uh wetlands and permitting. And also we have related discipline to our core, uh, you know, business or core services I just mentioned. We also do landscape architecture, uh lighting design. Uh, we have a professional land surveyors, so we do land survey, boundary survey. And also we provide construction administration services as well. So we are very multidisciplines, uh disciplined and capable of do almost everything related to civil civil engineering. And as uh Michael mentioned, uh, we've been providing uh planning uh peer review service for for Planning Board for last three years. And Michael approached me and thought, hey, what is your capability? Uh, he he liked to streamline peer review process for all the other department uh in the uh, in the town, uh including, uh, you know, ZBA, uh Conservation Commission, uh Stormwater Committee. Um, did I forget anything?
No.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so uh we discussed and I I told him, presented uh our qual- qualification. We are capable for doing all of them. And actually, uh, we, Town of Littleton, we have the same situation. We provide all the peer review service for the Town of Littleton. And we do a lot of peer review services for other town, not necessarily we serve all the different departments, but, you know, different towns, we, some towns we do Conservation Committee uh review, some town, uh, we do a Planning Board review. And and obviously Planning Board review sometimes involves sites of all, but it's also traffic issues and our transportation group, uh, if it wasn't clear, we have, you know, traffic, uh, you know, group as well, so. So uh basically that's the base, uh, you know, why we have, why I'm here. And so we are prepared to uh pro- provide peer review services for the town for any, the, you know, department to we mentioned, so. Yeah, if you have any questions, I'd like to answer any questions.
The Planning Board is well respected in this town. It it's it's run professionally and does this job very well. So how long have you been doing it with the Planning Board?
Three years.
Three years?
Yes.
And have you ever done for any of our other boards as just a one-time?
I think we uh dealt with Stormwater Committee very recently.
Okay.
That was a one-time last.
You're a ZBA currently?
Oh, yeah, ZBA, yeah, Planning Board's ZBA.
Okay, uh, great, thank you. Uh, gentlemen, I mean, Mr. Hall, do you have any questions yet?
Mr. Ishikura?
Yes.
In regards to conservation?
Yes.
How much experience do you have in in that area?
Yes.
Not you personally, but your.
Yes, yes, yeah. So we actually have a Stormwater and Permitting Group.
No, no, I'm talking about uh wetlands protection.
Ah, yes, so I just, so regarding uh wetland protection, right, yes. So we have Stormwater Permitting Group. So this permitting, Stormwater and Permitting Group is specialized basically in uh wetlands protection act. So they are very familiar with Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act and also sto- stormwater treatment. And so we have specialized group dealing with this Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act. They're very familiar with it and so we design and the review uh related uh these wetlands. I don't know if that was your question or not, but.
Yes, no, no, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, the second question, a follow-up to that, is what communities in Massachusetts have you worked with on this issue?
Yes, so I uh I'm gonna say top of my head, so it might not be the full list or complete list. So as I said, we do Town of Littleton, we do peer review for all of the, you know, departments. So we've been doing that, I I don't know, maybe ten, over ten years, maybe now, ten years. And we've been, uh, we have, you know, on call, you know, contract with the town. Every time town need to do peer review, they pro- uh, you know, contact us, we provide scope and, you know, task order, then we get the task order to do peer review. Uh, Town of Wilmington, we do uh do a lot of work for the town. Um, uh, Ashland, I, we do a lot of work for Ashland, I'm not sure how much we've done the peer review. Uh, we work for Yamath, uh. I I'm, I, we do a lot of work for the town, so a little bit I'm mixed up which town we do peer review, which town actually we do the design work. So that's why I'm a little bit uh trying not to say wrong things, because we we do a lot of work for the towns, but a lot of design work and not necessarily peer review. I'm trying to remember, oh, yeah, AIA, we've done peer reviews, um.
No, that's, that's good, whatever I'm looking for is references.
Yes, so, uh, yes, you can contact any of these these towns, uh, you know, Wilmington, uh, Littleton, AIA, Ashland.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yeah.
All right, this would be on-call, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as needed basis.
Uh, as needed, right. And um, are we talking a one-year agreement still?
The, what was, um, what we had, what we're actually like stepping off from as a three, I like as a three-year agreement that has been for the past three years. Uh, like we were, uh, we were initially thinking, like a three-year agreement to replace, so, a three-year agreement that we had. And further thinking, like I do think because we're trying to um actually create a different model uh and having, and if Green would be willing, like a one, and and a one-year with one, with uh with a two-year, with one two-year option to renew. So at the end of the year, because we are, uh, so trying to streamline and go, I like, I like get a new more coordinated direction, we would have an ability to all assess how things are working after a year. So if we needed to adjust anything, so and then entertain, so any option to renew after that.
Two years, and fiscal year you're talking about, correct?
Yes, yeah, fiscal year, yes.
And um, Mr. Cavalo is here from the Planning Board, I'd like to hear from him. Um, but Mrs. Mello, do you have any questions yet?
No, I wanted to wait till we hear from whoever wants to speak to.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, if you don't mind, uh, thank you, sir, we appreciate it. But if you just wanna hang on, we'll, might have some more questions for you.
Go.
Okay. Uh, yes, please.
Actually, I'd like to add store, Town of Store on that list.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna hold you to those.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Jeff Cavalo?
Cole, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Uh, yeah, so uh, I'm I'm chair of the Planning Board.
Right.
And uh, we've uh had, it's three years of experience. Uh, I've been a chair for about, let's see, is it two years? Police track, time flies by. A year and a half, yeah, time flies. So uh, the entire time I've been with the Planning Board, we've interfaced with Green International. Uh, and uh, I've got nothing but good things to say about our interaction. Uh, we uh, every time we have a peer review request, uh, we do have timely responses and we're very thankful for uh their timeliness and their thoroughness, thoroughness in in the packages we do get back. So we've had a lot of good experience, so our our assessment based on past performance is that they're, uh, they do very good work.
Well, I was just gonna ask you that, compared to what you've done in the, you have used in the past, uh, much better?
I've, I have no other comparison.
Okay, you don't personally?
I don't personally, no, I do not. Uh, unfortunately Kara's not here tonight, so she would have a a longer history.
Yeah.
Of or beyond potentially Green International. But uh, from the interactions we've had, uh, being a member of the Planning Board and serving as the, as the chair in the time I have served, uh, we've had very good experiences with the Greens, so.
Good, okay.
Good report from us, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole, do you wanna ask Mr. Uh, okay. Okay, does anybody else, oh, yes, please.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. We had a a packed meeting yesterday with several of us, spoke with um Mr. Coy and uh we spoke about conservation, so I was here previously, um, and when I left, um, Ms. Nova, Marty Nova, took over for peer review from Conservation for, she's been doing that for about seventeen years, maybe sixteen years now. Very familiar with the town, um, and due to me being part-time and not being able to review everything, she's been, from a wetland perspective, our consultant.
Okay.
Um, she's not an engineer, she's a wetland scientist. Um, she usually uses other engineers um as consultants with her and she'll step out to them, um, depending on the, the situation. But um, we had a conversation yesterday and I just wanted to reiterate that the conversation was that we, um, that be- because a lot of times Green subs out wetlands work, but not the stormwater component of the Conservation Commission reviews, 'cause basically for conservation, you're reviewing wetlands biological, right, landscape wetlands, and then you're reviewing stormwater, so you're reviewing um how the project's going to impact, um, you know, the community based on stormwater, and that's where his engineers would come in. But we, we, I asked if we could continue to use Marty Nova and he could, his company would be willing to sub to her, and I don't know if you've looked into her at all?
No, to be honest, I I have, yeah, yeah.
She's looked into you and she said she would be happy to work with you if you, when the opportunity arises, if you would reach out to her. So I just wanted to reiterate that we would like to continue to use Marty and if they would sub that way, it would be cleaner, I think, I don't know.
Yeah, as I said yesterday, I have no issue with the arrangement. And it seems like you have been using uh them for a long time, for like unwrap, and uh, you know, so I have no issue with that arrangement.
She's done, she's done more than just air rats, she's done reviews, um, so, you know, she would, she has a lot of knowledge. I think she probably has forty years' experience now. Um, so, you know, she could help with other reviewing criteria and performance standards and those sorts of things.
Yes, yeah, and uh, I think that's where, you know, comes uh Michael and I talked, the streamlined aspect comes is, you know, when we, you know, review the, you know, wetlands impact.
Yeah.
Now, DP has a requirement of stormwater.
Right.
So stormwater aspect is more like drainage and engineering calculations, you know, how's that all the, you know, water goes into, waters going into the mitigate, uh, will be mitigated before it goes to the wetlands. It's a lot of engineering calculations involved. So I think we can work together, we do that part, and where she has expertise in the wetlands, biological side of the wetlands, we can definitely uh u- use her help.
Okay.
Habitat studies and, I mean, you know, if you'd like, I can get a resume and forward it to you or have her reach out to you.
Well, if you're using her for seventeen years, I have.
We've, yeah.
How many years?
And I don't know if Mr. Did, seventeen years?
Seventeen years?
Um, might be sixteen, but when I lived the first time, they started using her and they never stopped.
Okay.
Actually, she had her own business, Nova Armstrong and Associates, and then she went to Beta. And then she, now she's left Beta and she's on.
I didn't know Armstrong Associates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I di- I didn't know her, but I've heard about Armstrong Associates, so, yeah.
Yeah, Mary Lou Armstrong is her sister, I believe, is that true, Mike?
I don't, I don't know, sorry.
How did you know her, please?
Oh, Mr. Didger, do you have any uh?
Concerns?
Uh, yes, uh, okay, you, I I'm getting the impression that you do not have your own wetland scientists.
Uh.
Okay, I guess no.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's correct, yes, yeah.
The answer is no.
Yes, no, yeah.
So, so it would be up to us to suggest to you who we would like to use. If, you know, whether it's Marty Nova or or if someone, if she couldn't do it because she doesn't know the distance, we could hire someone else under our fifty-three G accounts. Am I correct in assuming that?
I have, I have the G account system, so.
Am I correct in assuming that?
I'm set, yeah, done.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just, I would assume that if you hire this gentleman and his company for his services, it's up to them to determine who they wanna hire.
Right.
You can certainly make a recommendation, and if you have a recommendation of good background, it is, it is.
Well, we would know some people want to hire.
Well, that's, that's fine, you you can, you can make positive and negative recommendations, but it's obviously entirely up to the company to make their own business decisions.
Yeah, but, you know, I think we can, we can discuss that and uh, you know, unless there's some issues uh or something, but typically.
Do you have a conflict with her?
No, as I said, typically I don't see that to be issue, yeah.
I don't know how the paperwork would all work, Mike, but.
We would, they would be, I mean, in distance, since, oh, in distance, since Marty Nova would be a subcontractor of Green. And it sounds like, based on your discussion that you mentioned from Marty, uh, that Marty would be open and fine with that as well.
Right, so typically, you know, in the reality, how it goes is she can give us, for each task order, right, she can give us a proposal and the cost and the scope of work she does. And uh, you know, based on what's being asked to review, any supplemental aspects of the work we would do, uh, need to do, we do our own where she can, it's in, included in the cost. So we combine her cost and our work's cost, put them together and submit to the town for the review and uh, and hopefully developer has all the money to pay for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Nancy, I'm sure you have uh something to say too?
Oh, I have quite a few.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Nancy Gulat, Chairman of the Stormwater Committee. We've actually only had one peer review done and it was with uh Green International uh because it related to Brook Street Solar. And we all know all the problems with Brook Street Solar. And when our uh stormwater agent looked at it uh and saw the uh, saw the work that was done not in compliance with the original approved plans and there was another set proposed and there was more discussion, he felt that we needed to get an outside party to do that review, uh, and that was Green International.
Um. What, excuse me for a second, why'd you hire Green, just because it came recommended by?
Well, it was decided to contact Mrs. Easterday to find out who they, who the town uses.
Town uses, okay.
To get some names.
Yeah.
And um, the information was given to Mr. East, Mrs. Easterday and she forwarded it to Green International. So, uh, again, we hadn't done outside reviews.
Right.
Uh, and since we weren't spending town money, uh, we decided to go with what planning used.
Okay.
Um. My concern is that, first of all, uh, I don't know, and I may be wrong, that it, there was, the town did not reach out to other engineering firms who over the years have done a lot of business with us and uh, who as a matter of fact have given us free services. I don't want to see anything happen that would um professionally injure those relationships. Uh, we've had work done by. We've had work done by Fuston O'Neill, we've had done, work done by Weston and Sampson, and there've been a few others. And we've actually contracted with them for some services. But I can tell you, Weston and Sampson and the EPA are totally responsible for the assistance I got to do the stormwater stuff back in two thousand and seven. Paid zero for it. I had two engineers at Weston and Sampson helping me. So I'm concerned about a professional relationship, this is no reflection on this company. I just want you to know some history. In listening to the discussion, I, I feel there is a weakness in Conservation Commission and Stormwater. I'm not going to address Conservation, but I will tell you, the Stormwater Committee, as appointed by the Board of Selectment, there's a rep from the Board of Selectment, one from the Board of Health, one from the Conservation Commission, one from the Street Department, one from the Planning Board, one from the Building Commission. All of those titles were picked because it would allow all of those boards and committees with a representative on Stormwater to know everything that was happening relative to Stormwater. And they could go back to their boards and give them updates. I know that sometimes, probably all the times, when an approach is made to the Planning Board about a project, or the zoning board, they will say, make sure you check with Stormwater. Conservation and Stormwater quite often work together because of similar problems. But when we have projects that really involve both, but the rules are separate, we look to see which violations are the, lean towards one committee or the other. And we have right now several joint projects. And in some cases, the Conservation takes the lead, we have a solar farm under that. There's another solar farm, I mentioned, Brook Street, which is the one your company did a peer review on. Stormwater took the lead on that, has, still has the lead on that. CONCOM is involved, we share information, we discuss things, but we both, although we're together, we both kind of go out and come back because there has to be full compliance. So I, I have that concern. Another thing I will mention is that I'm only hearing the mention of Mass D E P. In Massachusetts, the EPA has primary responsibility for Stormwater, not the D E P. So I know there's reference here to the Stormwater Handbook. But actually, prior to, it says Mass Department of Protection, that should be Mass Department of Environmental Protection, Mass D E P. Above them, the first button should be the Environmental Protection Agency. Because the EPA in Massachusetts and the county has financing. So they're the first ones that would load the boom on us if they chose to. They're the ones we report to directly. D E P gets a copy of our N S four and Notice of Intent as a courtesy. But I, I think there definitely needs to be, needs to be referenced into this about the role of the EPA, which is the primary role, and the Clean Water Act. So the other thing I want to mention, anyone who attended the Stormwater meeting or sat in on it, the report that came in was read publicly because we were taping, we weren't broadcasting live. So anybody that listens to that report of that meeting will actually hear what your report said from your, the third-party peer review. My concerns are that, I was at the site visit with Todd Pilling and the engineer. He had a report prepared before the site visit was conducted. It was not accepted. It was not accepted by the town. You can't write a report if you haven't done the site visit first. So we did the site visit, and I have, if after the meeting's over, you want to see the pictures of Brook Street, state is now, state is the day of the site visit, I've got all those here. I was concerned about that. So we conducted the site walk, I was taking a lot of pictures, Mr. Pilling was with Mr. Feingold, and they walked all around, and we discussed a lot of things. Then the report was issued for the Stormwater Committee meeting last Wednesday. The way the report was structured is, it's not a lot of pages. There's one column on the left that talks about the requirement that has to be met. So let's say it's cited D E P regulation, whatever. The middle column was the comment of the engineer, what that engineer's opinion was. And the last column was yes, no, or to be determined, which is the status. I read each of the, I started from the left, this is the problem that was, we're trying, this is, these are the regs we're trying to address. The question is, was the project built, now, originally, let me back up. Originally, the Stormwater basins were not constructed according to the plans that were approved by the Planning Board. They didn't drain. Next thing we know, they bring in another construction crew, dig them all up, they find the ground-up stumps in the rocks. They were told, build these basins according to the original plans, they're still not draining. So the peer review addressed, here's a standard that has to be met, this is what I found. And it was that way for the items that were covered. But in the column on the far right, it said to be determined. And I questioned this at the Stormwater meeting. I said, I read these, there's no question in my mind, the answer is no on all of these. I don't understand why we would get a professional report, a peer review, that doesn't get the same conclusion from me. Anybody reading that would clearly understand it didn't meet the requirements. So I mentioned it at the Stormwater meeting, and Mr. Feingold was sitting in, and he said, yeah, that's right, we should issue a corrected report. So he did issue another report, and the only thing changed was the fact that all of the column items across are all no.
Right, that's the one you sent with us.
I found it embarrassing because, number one, Mr. Hafiz from Grasshopper was sitting in at that meeting via Zoom, as was their engineer, their new engineer, Mr. Fassandola. Embarrassing because I'm thinking, we hired somebody to do this, and you don't have to be a rocket scientist to read the requirement, read the note, and the answer is no. Mr. Hafiz evidently was thinking there was something else that was going to occur for the money they paid. So we reached out to Mrs. Easterday, she read what the proposal was, and that was that, that's what they responded to. I don't know what he was expecting, but I don't think there was any way, when you looked at that report, you could conclude there was any answer other than no. They weren't built according to the original Planning Board rules. There were some modifications made in the basin, still not draining, even though the calculations appear that that might be true. So it's nothing personal, I have no connection to this engineering firm, have never dealt with them before. But what I would say is, if you're considered tonight to do this, I think one year with options for renewal is the better way to go. We may never need another third-party review, but I can only tell you what happened. And you can watch the Stormwater rerun, as I call it, and you'll hear the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Can I answer to some?
Sure.
Okay, so that was our first interaction with Stormwater Committee. And we had a little bit of probably misunderstanding for both sides, what we do, and what the, you know, what we do and what our expectation from our side is. You know, Nancy, Nancy, right? Nancy mentioned we only put T B D, and we didn't provide, you know, answer for that. Because typically, the way we do it is we give proponent opportunity to correct some of the measures. And I think that's where the part of the misunderstanding is. We point out which is not meeting according to the, you know, agreed, you know, plans or something, we pointed out. And misunderstanding, it seems to be, that proponent expected us to provide the solution for the problems. And for us, I don't think that's the best interest for the town, for us, because they have their own engineer. They should be providing the solution to the problem they created, not our job to come up with solutions. Also, if we come up with the solutions for them, they may turn around and say, hey, you provided solution, so we are no longer responsible. So that's not the town of best interest.
Right.
So we do not provide solution to the proponent. Proponent engineer should come up with the solutions. So typically, what happens is that she said to be determined, column we said to be determined because we give proponent come up with solutions, they come up, so, hey, this is what we agreed, and we put it in there. So if you see some of the other example, we provided for other, that shows solutions.
Okay.
Proponent came up with, and we agreed.
If I could just add, I don't think Mr. Hafiz was looking for the engineer to come up with a solution. I was thinking he was maybe looking for something that was less critical. The report's accurate, no question in my mind. We didn't get it until, I think I got it the day before the meeting, there wasn't really time. It did get, it was emailed to them in Toronto. So there wasn't a lot of time, but I can also tell you, with Mr. Fassandola zooming in also, their engineer, if the report had said no initially, they would still have had the opportunity with a P E sitting there saying, wait a minute, there must be a misunderstanding, and the misunderstanding is this. So the conclusion on the right column could have been changed to, I don't know, partial, partially correct? I'm not really sure. The other thing is, the discussion continued with both engineers on Zoom. The solution that has been proposed, two, two potential problems why those basins aren't draining. One, the fabric they put in the bottom of the big basin has become clogged with silt. And if that's the case, there's got to be a test hole dug, and if it's silted up, it's got to be dug up again, number one. I had raised the issue, is it too deep and it's potentially groundwater? Neither engineers think that's the problem, they think there could be siltation. The solution that came out of that Stormwater meeting and agreed to by everybody, even Mr. Hafiz, although he's going to, ka-ching, it's going to cost money, the siltation problem. So nothing can be done at that site, nothing. No more tree cutting, no tree topping, no anything, until the site is stabilized. And that's from both engineers. You'll see in the pictures, if you look at them after the meeting, there's bare spots down there, grass has never grown. You know, in a crack in the road in the summer, in a drought, you get weeds growing in a crack. There are other places where there is green grass. There are places that there's such hard pan that, I don't know what you do with it, I would think you have to bring in loom. But I just want you to know that all of that discussion has resulted in you got to get the site stabilized. So with the hottest part of the season coming, I don't know how they're going to grow grass down there. And when they seeded it with something the last time to try to stabilize it, they had worked with UMass Amherst to get a special kind of mixture, and they put it down. I can tell you, there are some wildflowers growing there. Weeds would be something acceptable because it would hold the soil. So they've got an issue before the CONCOM relative to topping trees or taking trees down. Nothing's going to happen down there till we see, see something growing on that land that's going to hold that soil. So based on that, there was really no dispute about, the answer is no in all cases. So that's the plan of action going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ho, I know you have some concerns, so whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Mr. Shakura?
Yes.
What I'm about to say is not a reflection of you or your company. My concerns that I'm going to express are based on the process. One, Mr. Count, were you involved in the creation of this contract that I have before my this evening?
No.
Were you?
No.
No.
Secondly, there were concerns that came up to me a week ago. Now, I understand these concerns were addressed at a PAC meeting yesterday, is that correct? That's correct. As my understanding, an attempt was made several years ago to establish the standalone position of peer review services provided by one engineering firm. And I want to add, this weekend has been hellacious in the number of complaints that I've received about this, this issue from several boards. This evening, I've heard both the pros and cons of once again creating this position. And I will be at this time making a motion to table this proposal this evening. No second on that?
Oh, is that your motion?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter, Cameron said aye.
Over the past two years, I have heard from members of the Board of Health, Conservation, a Planning Board member who was present on Zoom, and Stormwater members, their frustration in dealing with a Board of Selectment and a town administrator who attempt to micromanage the boards and set the agenda in a way that circumvents their authority and their autonomy. Over the last month, we have lost several good members in this town who expressed frustration about what I've just mentioned. Some of those people have helped relocate jobs in another community because they were going to leave. It is not a surprise that we have experienced turnovers in positions in our town government. Conservation and Stormwater have functioned quite nicely over the past two years doing business with peer reviews using engineers of their choice. Now, my work, I, as a representative of the Water District, they've had wonderful experience with Beta. And I'm not saying that Beta is better than Green International. Weston and Sampson was mentioned this evening. But the unfortunate part, as one of the three members that has to make a decision, we weren't given the opportunity to hear their presentation so that we could make a decision that was what we feel the best interest of the town and the committees in which we'll be working directly with that engineer. You have a wonderful presentation, you have some wonderful recommendations. But before I decide something as important as this, I would also like to hear from the other groups. In addition, I would like, and traditionally it is the chairman or his designate that would sit down with the town administrator to draw up a contract that would then come before the Board of Selectment for review and approval. Unless someone can tell me why there's such a rush, I don't know why we need to do this this evening. Because I've certainly heard a lot of complaints and concerns. So thank you for supporting tabling it, and again, I'd like to see this process. I do see the need for it, but I think it needs some tweaking and some work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike, do you want anything to say about it?
Yeah, um, yeah, in terms of a proposal contract, I mean, one of the things, and, and we, I mean, as you know, like, I like to. and, and we, I mean, as you know, like, I like to begin, like, anything I frankly do, and I think, and I've proven this, to get, to get feedback from the board at the beginning of any project. That is simply what we're proposing to do here. So yes, they propose the contract, so it's a template contract. There's been really nothing to negotiate here, because all we're talking about is, oh, it's really the length of the contract. The costs associated with the contract depends on every single peer review job and project that, that, that would be completed here. And those are done, and, and to really manage and handle it on a case by case basis. So there was, like, I, I just want to be very clear. I take my work for the board, so in my direction from the board extremely seriously. We've heard time and time again how we do with everything happening with, with the, with the proposed projects, different types of things happening, that we do, we do when we have an opportunity. We'd like to see if we have an opportunity to better twenty things. That's all that was being proposed here. I was, I wasn't, and I don't believe I have ever, in the two years I've been here, I haven't got ahead of the board. You know, like, as I mentioned at the beginning of this whole proposal, I wanted to bring it to the board for the board's feedback and blessing. I didn't do that arrogantly. So in fact, at the end of last week, I reached out to every board member who, who's on the zoning board, on the Concom, so on Stormwater and Planning. So, and I shared this with them, so we don't, so we don't do things in this town in a bubble. We'd like to have this type of feedback, so we could actually chart our future together. So I just wanna, like, I just wanna say that I do, it is important for me to get direction from the board and, oh, in depth, oh, why essentially I have not gone out and signed anything. I wanted to present it here tonight to get the feedback that we've gotten.
And we did discuss ahead of time about the one year, because originally we thought three years. And I think the one year makes a lot of sense. Because there's no sense locking us into something that we're not gonna be happy with.
I'd, I'd still like, a couple of things. One, either yourself and to sit down with Conservation and, and discuss that issue of involvement, how that is going to, to work in regards to a little control of their destiny, whether it be involving their engineer or a process created so that there is the ability, a check and a balance in regards to the smoother of communication, representation. On the issue of, I'd like to hear from Sampson or Beta. Maybe they don't want to participate. But I think especially, I don't know too much about Sampson, but I know being with Water District, a lot of the work Beta does for them. They're highly respected. And I think the town owes them at least the opportunity to present or to say they're not interested. You know, when you work with someone for a long time in a community, and then you just don't even give them the opportunity. I, I think that's kind of disrespectful.
Yeah, we're not looking to burn any bridges.
Right.
Would I be able to just clarify one thing? Because like, it has been mentioned, the respect that we have for all the firms we work with.
Right.
And I take that extremely seriously as well. Those relationships, as, as has been mentioned, are extremely valuable. You build them, and they become valuable. Like, and those, yeah, and, like, and those relationships really help you manage projects. We have an amazing relationship with Beta. They, like, nothing is interfering with that here. They're managing, at the present, we, bridge reconstruction project. They just, we, we just, are based, are based on a scope and proposal. We hire them to do our pavement, we hire them to do our pavement management. We hire them to do drainage projects up on Hart Street as well. So we do try to spread the wealth, so and spread the resources based on the expertise that different types of firms bring here. In terms of Wooden Current, it's actually Wooden Current that actually worked with us in the Water District. We have an amazing relationship with Wooden Current, actually, and with the, like, and with the coordination efforts that we're looking to strengthen with the Water District and between the Water District and the town. Wooden Current, so it's gonna work with us on that grant. So we, we have a good relationship, we have a good relationship with Wooden Current. And they actually worked with us three years ago on the sewer study. So we do try to spread things out accordingly. But as I mentioned earlier, one of the things that we real, that we really started with here, and I think is, and really still remains, one of the major questions is whether we want to try to coordinate, like, our on-call peer review engineering. We do, from the work that's happening now with the Planning Board, we, to my knowledge and to Chairman Akavala's knowledge, we have a very good thing working with the Planning Board. And, and one of the reasons, like, why I wanted to come before tonight to, to, to gauge everyone's feedback, so is I don't want, and I don't think we as a town should, so should one risk just arbitrarily interrupting the relationship with Green and the Planning Board either. So what, how we approached this was looking at the relationship, so for on-call peer review engineering, that we already had and see if there was a willingness, see if there was support for really expanding that and building that out a little more. That was a question. It wasn't trying to leave out any other firm or not to include any other firm, because again, we tried to work with all, oh, yeah, like, I mean, and value the expertise of all the firms who we work with based on everything that each firm brings to the table. And that's important.
Sure.
Could we send letters to Beta, Weston and Sampson, Wood, Wooden Current, since they do business with us, and see if they are interested in presenting to us in regards to a peer, you know, systematic peer, one?
An on-call review?
Right.
Yeah, there's no reason we can't.
And then if they refute, then if they say they're not interested, then we have done due diligence in reaching out to them. And then, secondly, if there is someone else who wishes to present, then we discuss that among and decide and award it, a contract to one or the other.
Okay. I don't think that tonight was to enter into a contract.
I saw a review discussing that, so.
Yeah, because that's everything that could come up. And I mean, a very, and very respectfully, like, I'm not going to present something to the board without all the information and backup that should be coming with something like that.
Sure. I, I think in fairness, we should, we should talk to the other engineering firms. And like Mr. Ho said, give them the opportunity to make a presentation to the board. And I, I think in each individual board is comfortable with who they're working with, and that certainly carries a lot of weight. But it'd be interesting to see who, who wants to and who doesn't want to.
I, I don't disagree.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to just say something about the thing that Mike put together. Sorry, I choked on my water, and now my eyes are watering, I'm a mess. The document that you put together, when we go back and review it, I know that you said that you had sent it out to the boards. Just make sure that we get good feedback if we decide to go that route on everyone, because, I mean, they have the best knowledge on all this. I want to make sure that they're happy with whatever goes out.
That makes sense.
Okay. You okay to do the announcement?
Yes, if I can kind of see. On Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, at 5:00 PM, there will be a presentation at the Dyton Council on Aging. This is 10:59 Somerset Ave. This presentation will be on Aging and Memory Loss, presented by Butler Hospital, Memory and Aging Program Outreach Coordinator. To register, you can visit tinyurl.com slash ALZ prevention. The Dyton Public Library presents Knock on Wood. This is a live presentation, performance to take on place on July 20th, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Dyton Lions Pavilion, 10:59 Somerset Ave. Light refreshments will be served. The Town of Dyton's Food Bank Distribution will be held next on July 15th, local, located at Town Hall, 979 Somerset Ave. This is in the lower level.
Thank you. Town Administrator's report.
Yes, I just, I just have, I just have two things, two issues that I want to just share with the board and for the public's attention. Number one, with the end of the fiscal year and the beginning of the new fiscal year, along with all the projects that we currently have in the queue and are working on, we are doing a lot of procurement work. We do have on-call contracts for trades, for trades firms in terms of on-call electrical services, on-call plumbing services, on-call H V A services. So in the event that we do have an issue or a project, we already, we already have someone bid, like, in accordance with Chapter 149, like, in all the prevailing wage laws. So we do, we do have on-call, the on-call bid out right now. We do expect in a few weeks, we'll have the results and a proposed contract for that to come back from the board. We will be probably by the end of this week, hopefully, putting out the on-call plumbing and the on-call H V A C bids as well, so that we're able to get responses on that. In terms of the on-call architectural and engineering services, we need, we need to put that out to advance. I'd like actually to begin advancing the second phase of the library building project. So we expect that to get out to bid in the next week or so as well. With, with FY '23 ending, we have to put our town billing cleaning services out to bid as well. That is an easier bid to put out, I can receive feedback on. Actually, that's just a scope of services. We do have the, we do have the Main Street Drainage, like, and Stormwater Improvement Project, which, which will also involve an Opera application. I do expect to bring, that will actually start with the Opera application in Bristol County. So I do anticipate bringing that forward to the board in the next month. The same thing with the application, the Opera application for the Sewer Department pump upgrades that, that will take place up by Dyton Power as well. There's, there's a sewer pump.
Oh, the station?
Yeah, that actually, that actually takes everything out of Dyton Power, like, and that needs about half a million dollars in upgrades.
Sure.
So an Opera application will be coming forward on that as well. We are, and our earliest, early this week, we did meet to continue advancing the Town Hall Walkway Reiling and Steel Lake Project. So we hope, and we expect that that will be up to bid by either, at the end of this month or the first part of August. We're doing all the drawings and the specs and everything now, so we can advance that project. We also, the, the Fire Station Building Committee began meeting as well. And one of the, one of the first tasks and functions that they will have before them is to consider a draft out of queue that will be used to go out to bid to seek a consultant to complete a feasibility study. And so we have, we're anticipating that probably in the next month or so as well. So the next two months, we will be very procurement heavy. It's a, like, it's, like, it's a technical, more detailed. Are you part of, of the role, but all these things are required by law to do what we need to do.
Sure.
Any questions on any of that before I move on?
The walkway?
Yes.
Do you see a completion date by the fall? Or certainly the winter, which?
I'd say, I'd say probably late fall before the winter.
Okay.
We want to have the, the new railing system up before winter. That is the open expectation.
Okay. Same company that's going to do the railing, is going to do the set of stairs?
Yes.
Okay.
We do have an on-call coffin duty contract existing.
Yep.
Where we do, we already have that procured. What we do have to procure, we do have to spec out drawings for and procure would be the railing systems, actually.
And railing on the stairs, too?
Uh, yes.
Okay. The Building Committee, they've met the first time already. And how often are they going to meet, do we know?
Once a month.
Once a month? And we're shy, one member?
Yes. And I did speak to the Fire Chief today about the applicants for the new members as well.
Yep.
And he, his plan is to add the interviews for the new member position to the next agenda for the next meeting for recommendation.
And I certainly think they'll make the presentation to us, the Building Committee will, and they'll be interviewed by the selectmen?
Yes, in terms of the recommendation for new member, yes.
Okay. That was it on those things?
Great. Any other questions before I move on? The, the, the next, the next item I just want to highlight is actually really exciting as well. Back in March, the Division of Local Services through the Department of Revenue reached out to us. I can reach, and reach out to myself, you know, Town Accountant. And they have established, the Division of Local Services, that's an entity that actually came before us last June with a financial management review. They have a new program, like, a municipal finance fellow program, where they're working with the community college system to really create the community college system as a feeder, basically as a feeder, to address a lot of the workforce challenges that we've, that we face, that we face in the present in the municipal finance profession right now. And through that, they had an applicant, they had an applicant through the fellowship program from Dyton who, who part of the program involves, like, a month-long intensive program at the Department of Revenue on all the aspects of municipal finance. That just actually took place in the month of June. And the second part of that program is two-month-long, is a two-month-long paid internship by the state. And so, the long story short, for the months of July and August, we're gonna have the opportunity to benefit from this state two-month-long paid internship program. And we're gonna be able to welcome a municipal finance fellow to actually, to actually help us, like, and to work with our offices, Town Accountant's office, and also Treasury's office. With goals, obviously, we have the year when close-up happening as well. But for the time that I've been here and been working for the town, we have, we've been talking about and planning the need for financial forecasting. And so we're gonna have the intern work with us to begin that project. Like, and we're also gonna, as, as we have also talked about, and as, and as was highlighted, the need for, in the financial, financial management review, the long overdue need for the town to have financial policies as well. So we're gonna ask the, like, and we're gonna ask our fellow to work with us to, to begin our efforts on that. So we have a draft foundation. Hopefully, by the end of the summer, I got something to propose to the board for feedback. I'm very excited that this fellow's a Dyton resident.
That's cool.
Yeah, her name is, her name is, her name is Albertio Ekerson. She's actually the daughter of Dave Ekerson, who's a member of the CPC. And so the Town Accountant, we met with her earlier in the spring. Very, very bright, very, very energetic, ambitious. So like, we're really, we're, like, we're really looking forward to the next two months and working.
Yeah, how do we get so fortunate?
I think just luck, and also, I mean, I'm proud of, you know, I mean, our relationship with the Division of Local Services, too, hasn't happened just because.
Right.
And we have built something, I believe, really strong with them. Uh, 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 and again, I don't like to do, uh, um, uh, things and operate in a bubble. Uh, we like to, uh, have feedback from the state, from residents, from everyone as part of the job we do. I mean, and I would like to think based on the relationship that we built with the Division of Local Services that, that, I'll also have something to do with it as well.
Okay, great. Uh, do you guys have any questions for Mike? Any questions for Mike? Thank you. I, I, I'm assuming you're done.
No, that's it.
Oh, that's, that's plenty.
Thank you.
What's that?
I liked that you said that was plenty.
Um, selectmen's reports. Mr. Hull, I know you have a couple of them.
Few. Um, regarding the Fire Station Building Committee, they met on June fifteenth. Chief Christopher, Christopher McGee was elected chairman and Town Treasurer Paul Reynolds was elected president. The committee voted to accept the RFP presented to the committee and to post it. This proposal will look at several options available to the town. Free that, one, a new station, or two, repairs to both the north and south station, or an add-on addition to north station and make the south station a call station, which for all intents and purposes would reverse the roles of each station. Those are some of the things that the engineers, whoever wins the contract, will present different options and the building committee will take a look at those options. I'm not exactly sure if they're going to make a recommendation or they're going to rank them.
Okay.
That will be up to the board.
So they'll be giving more options than saying, this is what we suggest?
Possibly.
Okay.
Yes, um, you know, because i- if you take a look at Capital Outlay, how they do things, they don't make a recommendation per se.
Mm-hmm.
They list them in how their priorities are.
Right.
And the reason they do that is they are not determining the course that a pri, uh, an agenda is going to go. And I think FIRE is heading in that direction too. They want the voters in the end to decide the direction that we walk up.
Right.
Uh, as it was mentioned earlier, there's a, still a vacancy on the, uh, Fire Building Committee and it will be discussed at its July meeting. The Dyton Industrial Committee met Monday night. Um, and one of the things, you know, um, they had a resignation, which we'll be voting on later this evening. This member is, was an original member of the DDIC, um, Patrick Ballow. And the DDIC is asking that we post that position. Anyone who is interested in being a member, it is a member-at-large. Anyone who's interested in being a member of the DDIC, submit an application to Karen Brady. And, um, at their next meeting, which will be in a month, it's, they're always held, um, well, actually it'll be, um, July twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Um, also, coming up because through short notice and didn't make the agenda, they, uh, have a recommendation, but because it was Monday, we didn't have time to vote on it this, well, I mean, at this meeting, they are going to be recommending Laura Smith, who owns Lane Farms,
Mm-hmm.
as the farming representative to the DDIC.
Okay, because the Hoosier had left.
Yes, this is the Hoosier head. So that's going to be coming up. The other thing that they talked about, and I'm throwing this out, obviously, we can't get into it because it's not on the agenda. The idea of restructuring open space committee. Right now, Mr. Higgins and Mr. Karen are the only two members. It's a five-member board, so they don't have a quorum. So what we talked about was either reaching out to housing, conservation, zoning, planning, and agriculture as well as, you know, the general public to see if they wanted to designate members. Now, what designated members, that would be up to the board of the select, selectmen to decide if they wanted to go that route. And obviously, at-large has always been the case. That committee has had a very difficult time getting a quorum. So I, I wanted to throw that out, something to think about. And if we could put that on the next board of selectmen agenda so we could maybe formulate a plan. Um, what a lot of people don't understand, and I think Mr. Higgins and Mr. Karen have been working on, that there is a proposal, project circuit for a ZBA, I mean, um, a zoning bylaw amendment.
Mm-hmm.
So there's some serious work that Open Space needs to do in putting together that bylaw amendment to go before the voters. So they have a, a very important purpose for the community. Um, Dyton Oldwood School Committee meeting last night, two things. One, extremely important. Dr. Jacqueline Ash was appointed as the new principal of Dyton, Beaubird Regional High School. She's an educator for over thirty-four years from Pawtucket. She has served as an elementary school principal, a middle school principal, and was a principal of Shea, um, High School in Pawtucket before putting your name in for Dyke. They also talked about Portrait of a Graduate. And the areas of their focus is developing students and collaboration with the towns, the students, with both communities. Communication, developing people, students who are able to communicate, critical thinking, and so- social awareness, self and social awareness, developing compassion, kindness, and understanding for the community. Being global-minded, community-engaged, and preparing students for the twenty-first century. The Dyton Water District Special Election for Water Commissioner, uh, to fill the vacant seat to expire on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, will be held on Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three from noon to seven P. M. at the Dyton Water District Treatment Facility, located at one ninety-two Williams Street, North Dyton, Mass. Anyone wishing to be placed on the ballot must fill out a request to be placed on the ballot form at Dyton Water District Office. Uh, the process has already begun. It began on June twelfth, and the deadline for submission for the election will be July tenth, twenty twenty-three at three thirty P. M. And then, in closing, the Bristol County Commissioners and Advisory Board met, um, and last Thursday. I wasn't able to attend because we had a meeting, but they approved the Bristol County Agricultural High School amended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three in the amount of fifteen million, four hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. They also approved the county budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three in the total amount of thirty million dollars, nine hundred twenty-two dollars, eight, I'm sorry, nine hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and sixteen cents. Thank you.
You said amended, uh, for the Bristol, for the, the, uh?
They approved, I'm sorry.
They approved, not amended? Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Melo, yeah? Anything for report this evening?
No.
Okay, uh, then it's old business. Uh, do we have any?
No.
No, I don't have any, no.
Okay. Uh, new businesses then. Review, discuss, and act employee vacation carryover request.
We, um, we do, as I mentioned earlier, because it is, um, the end of the fiscal year, uh, we do have, um, we do have, um, the proposed vacation carryover request, uh, which all the, which all the requests are in line with, um, um, with the town expectations or like a, or a non-union employment contract or, uh, like, uh, or a collective bargaining agreement. Um, one, uh, one typo, I like in the proposed request, uh, is actually concerning, uh, the ACO. Um, and the typo in that, it actually lists, um, in the current proposed version, it, I guess, ten hours, uh, like in the ten, it should actually be a seventy.
Okay.
So like, um, so what I recommend is the vacation carryover request be approved, um, with amending, uh, the ACO carryover hours, um, to seventy hours, Mr. Chairman.
Lot of carryover requests.
This is, uh, this is actually fairly typical.
Yeah.
We, uh, we've never actually proposed, uh, this, and we never have actually proposed the request in a way like this that shows the whole picture.
Yep.
Uh, we've done, we've tip, we, um, historically have done them piecemeal and individually and I wanted to thank the town accountant, uh, for actually, for actually getting them all in one, uh, whole picture that still actually shows the whole picture.
The FIRE, how come there's ninety-six? Uh, obviously, I'm missing something.
They have, they have, uh, they have twenty-four hour schedules.
Twenty-four hour schedule, right. Okay. Um, is there a motion on the floor to approve the, uh, carryover request?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the employee vacation carryover request as presented this evening.
Um, with the amendment to seventy hours for the ACO, Mr. Chairman?
With the amendment of seventy hours for the ACO.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on, uh, on the new business, uh, review, discuss, and act Board of Selectmen's Annual Appointments, Appendix A.
So we do.
We do these individually, correct?
Um, not typically, well.
We, uh, the first, um, the fir, um, the first, uh, the first year's selectman hall that you were here, we did them individually, uh, but then we, uh, but then, uh, but then last year, they were, uh, approved by the board with exceptions or with an amendment. So, so they can, it is possible because, uh, uh, the names and positions have been posted as part of the agenda. Um, uh, the proposed appointments, uh, um, uh, can be taken up in total with any amendments or exceptions though. Uh, and I know we do have in the packet, um, um, correspondence from.
This is dated, uh, from the Dyton Conservation Commission, uh, Dyton Town, Town Dyton, nine seventy-nine Somerset Ave, Dyton, Massachusetts, zero two seven one five, to the Board of Selectmen from James Diggit, Chairman, uh, Dyton Conservation Commission. Subject: Conservation Table Request. This is dated June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. At the Conservation Commission meeting held on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, it was voted to request that the Board of Selectmen table the reappointment of a Dyton Conservation Commissioner until the Conservation Commission has the ability to make a recommendation to the selectmen regarding this appointment. This decision is based on the renewed, renewed interests from Dyton residents wishing to join the, the commission. This request to the Board of Selectmen was approved unanimously by the Commission on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Motion made, uh, to accept was made by David Phillips and seconded by Bill Fernet. It should be noted that this motion only applies to the reappointment of a Conservation Commissioner. Respectfully yours, James Diggit, Chairman of the, uh, Dyton Conservation Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to table the appointment until the Conserva, Conservation Commission has the ability to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen regarding this appointment.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye.
Since Mr. Mullin has said, don't need to read them individually, I would then, if it's okay, like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Annual Appointment as presented this evening.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Review, discuss, and act job descriptions for the ADA coordinator.
Yes, I can thank you, Mr. Chairman, we do. Uh, just want to share, we do have the ADA coordinator joining us by Zoom. Uh, but, uh, as part of the budget discussion this year, um, uh, um, regarding the ADA coordinator position, um, one, one of, one of the follow-up tasks that, uh, was really prioritized was, um, was, uh, was taking a look at the, um, at the different versions of the ADA job, the ADA coordinator job description that have existed all the last two years. And, um, uh, I'll, I can try to act, oh, yeah, the structure as a more clear, uh, I can craft it, I'm in practical job description. So, uh, like, I'm actually, last week I met, um, um, with the ADA coordinator based on what was, uh, like, actually discussed, um, as part of our budget process and the structure that was that, that was actually discussed and approved then. And, um, we, um, so, uh, like, uh, before you tonight for consideration, uh, like, is an updated, a job description for the ADA coordinator to that end. Um, one of the, um, one of the, one of the proposed changes that, uh, we're proposing this year, Alec, is, um, is that the ADA coordinator would have an hourly rate, um, of twenty-five dollars an hour based on the available budget, based on the available budget funding. But it would be, uh, but the position itself would be a per diem position uh, based on the available town operating budget, uh, in grant funding uh, with the approval of the town administrator. And so what really that change is, I'll, I guess, up until what we're proposing now, the ADA coordinator implied years, what, uh, would receive like a lump sum stipend of, of three thousand dollars for the year. What, what we are proposing now is that the ADA coordinator would work on a per diem basis. So he would earn, he would earn at a rate of twenty-five dollars an hour, uh, up to, uh, the three thousand sixty-dollar budget appropriation for the time and the hours that he puts in as the ADA coordinator. It's a much more, I'll, 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 it's, I'll, it's a much more clear, um, uh, like in that, I'll, I'll, it's a much more transparent way to, uh, to fund the position and frankly, to be fair, uh, to the ADA coordinator for the work on an hourly basis that the ADA coordinator would put in.
Okay.
If we do have, um, an ability, um, to apply and receive grants, that would also, that, that would also, uh, involve the ADA coordinator from an administrative portion. Um, the job description, I also contemplates and envisions him, him being able to be paid for any administrative grant work that he could do in the future for the town under, like, under any potential grant funding that we would receive as well.
Okay. Um, I know Mr. Hull had a question about, um, I think Mrs. Melo had the same, same question. What percentage of a, is administrative for a grant? Does it vary?
Yes, it does. It varies, and that's why, I, oh, yeah, I can, I can, I don't want to speak to the ADA Coordinator, but one of the things we discussed, I like, I like, is we, I like, is we initially discussed a flat percentage. So like, of an adminis-, a, a flat percentage of an administrative grant that, that may be budgeted into the grant. But my view, because those, those, like, administrative, oh, yeah, like administrative grant funding, I like, really changes grant by grant. So, so it's my recommendation that to try to set, oh, yeah, like a percentage at the beginning based on a grant that we don't, that we at this point aren't yet envisioning or don't yet know the grant parameters of.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, like, I mean, we may have a need to apply for maybe hypothetically, we can bill, or we can apply for up to twenty, twenty, twenty percent of a grant for administrative, for administrative costs. But maybe, so in the grant application, we have a need for infrastructure that, oh, yeah, like, we wouldn't go to the whole administrative cap. So in order to, in order to fund, oh, yeah, like, some additional infrastructure costs. Those are the, those are all the unknowns and the things that we don't know until we sit down and apply for it.
Okay. So when you apply for a grant, and the grant is a hundred thousand dollars, they, it's technically, could be a ten percent.
Oh, yeah, it could be five percent.
Could be five, whatever.
Ten percent, fifteen.
So the grant becomes a hundred and ten thousand? Or ninety thousand?
It, the, the grant itself would, again, based on how the grant is structured, like, it could become a ninety thousand dollar grant.
Okay.
I like, it could be, it could be structured that, that the town provides an administrative grant match, and that's the requirement of the grant.
Okay.
So, and based on those hypotheticals, so it's my view that it's impossible to predict
Yep.
how a grant is going to be structured at the beginning. So to determine, or to try to, to try to determine, like, a flat percentage, just.
Right, it's, it's impossible.
Oh, yeah, just out of the gate. That's my.
Okay. And, um, this could come at a considerable cost for a particular grant and end up by costing, costing us more money.
Which is why, Alec, I think we, we need to look at the goals of a grant that we apply for.
Yep.
Um, and then, I'll, I'll, yeah, and then determine what type of administrative costs are needed based on that.
Okay. And.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I?
Just a second, just a second, Jonathan.
Okay.
And, um, the number of grants
Yes.
that we apply for.
Yes.
Who gives the approval for a grant to be applied for?
Typically, I, in the last two years, I've, I, and, and, oh, yeah, I don't want to say I've been the gatekeeper.
Yep.
But I have worked with entities to determine, oh, you know, whether a particular grant aligns with the goals that we're trying to achieve.
Okay. Jonathan, the floor is yours.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me, let me just clarify a little bit here. I think, and this will answer some of the questions that you were just asking as well from the conversation that the town administrator and I had and worked out as part of, as part of this agreement. And that is, I'm, I'm going to use the example of the twenty thousand dollars that was recently approved for Disabilities Resource Grant for the new, for the new library. In that grant, it called for us potentially putting in up to fifteen percent towards administrative cost, which would have meant out of the total of twenty thousand dollars, three thousand dollars could have gone towards an administrative component. When I wrote the grant, we built in, because the town normally, unfortunately, has not had a history of building in an administrative component in the grants that we do for our projects. And this is across the board. This isn't related to ADA. The purpose of building in an administrative component in any grant, keep in mind that it doesn't change the top figure you ask for in the grant. The purpose of that is so that you are covering the administrative components of the grant, whether it be secretarial support, engineering support, highway commissioner, building commissioner, whatever it is, so that there's a reimbursement of hours slash time, if you will, from different departments.
Sure.
That's the purpose of the administrative side of it. So, as an example, with that twenty thousand dollars, we built in five, five percent. We approved, the grant was approved with the full twenty thousand dollars. That gave the town one thousand dollars towards the administrative component. That's not related to me, because first of all, that wasn't part of the agreement that we have now. Second of all, in the agreement that I've worked out with the town administrator that we discussed, this doesn't suggest that if a grant, using your example, is one hundred thousand dollars and we're building ten thousand dollars for administrative cost, I don't want to suggest or have you think that that means as the person who's writing the grant that automatically I'm going to receive a ten thousand dollar administrative cost or fee for that. I will not. And my, what I receive for that will be based on the work that I've done for the grant. So, and that's only related to disabilities, by the way. I just, I want to clarify that as well. I'm not going to try to write a highway grant. But if it's anything related to disability and there's a percentage built in, then the town administrator and I would have to sit down and discuss, what's the amount we're going to build in, what's the percentage we're going to build in? How much of that work will I be doing? So, for example, if putting the grant together is going to primarily involve the ADA Coordinator meeting with other town departments, committees, commissions, et cetera, but doing the, the grunt of the main part of the work, then they may call for a certain percentage. And then, once the grant is approved, and this is only for payment if a grant is approved. So again, to be clear, there's no dollars involved if a grant is not funded. If a grant is approved, then it's up to the town administrator, from my perspective, to determine how much do we need, how much involvement going forward do we need the ADA Coordinator? Do we need the coordinator to administer the grant and work with the departments in the town to make sure that the grant criteria are held forth and the reports are put together and all the timelines are met and so forth? Or is this going to be done by committee in a different context? That's going to determine how a significant amount of any administrative side of a grant is dispersed.
Okay.
Because if you have a significant part being done by the highway department and Tom, for example, then you may want to, you know, earmark more of the administrative component to cover the cost of his support staff and so forth who, who are involved in that. So in essence, that's how this works. In terms of any grants, I'm certainly not going to, if I hear of various grants, and I always do, there's the potential for an enormous amount of money to come into our town through grants that have an ADA component one way or another to it. I'm going to bring that to the attention of the town administrator. It's going to be up to the town administrator and whomever to decide if these are grants they want me to be involved in or to write. Similarly, with the Disabilities Commission, if they have things that they're interested in having grants for, for disability specific, then it's going to be up to the commission to sit down with the town administrator and say, we'd like the ADA Coordinator to be involved in working with this grant. So, I don't know if that explains a little, if that's a long explanation, but I think I've answered your questions.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do you have anything else you want to add before we move on?
I don't. I think that this is, you know, I, I know that the town's under financial constraints. We've all been through that. We've had other discussions about that collectively. And I think that this is a potentially, for now, this is a way for all of us to see how much work is needed by an ADA Coordinator in other ways in town. You know, we talked about this grant tapping a three, this, this contract of three thousand dollars. Depending upon what's needed in the town is going to determine whether or not this needs to have the supplemental funding throughout the year or not, or this is going to be enough. And I think that's, nobody really knows that in a way, because there hasn't been a gauge, so now there will be.
Okay.
So, this is, this is a way, and I think you all indicated before in other meetings, how do we know what's really needed? Well, this is a way to help gauge that going forward. If we have to exhaust this in six months, then we still need a coordinator. That's, that's going to have to be revisited. But I think this is, this is answering the way the Board of Selectmen indicated you wanted to do it, so I'm satisfied with it.
Great. Thank you. Do you have any comments, Mr. Hall?
Yes. As I look at this, it was very encouraging what Jonathan had to say. But it was also mentioned that traditionally, the town hasn't had a policy or it was mentioned traditionally, they haven't put in for administrative fee for grant writing. And, and that's separate from a job description. But I'd like to see us take a look at that and create a grant policy who will approve the grants. Because it's been past practice. It has been the town administrator, and it may turn out to be the town administrator. But we don't have a policy in writing. It's something we have done. And if we could have discussion down the road of creating a policy and, and looking at it, is it a recommendation of the TA with Board of Selectmen approval? Or is it just we grant that to the town administrator to make that decision? But the, the task at hand this evening is to establish a job description for the ADA Coordinator. The only question that I have is a statement that would specifically state that, and Jonathan seemed to be in agreement with this, that the town administrator would negotiate with the ADA Coordinator a percentage in grant applications. I think it's kind of, I mean, Jonathan said he would agree to that, and Mike said that's how he's done it in the past. But we haven't, in the words of Bill Rooney, memorialized it. The other thing that I would ask, and I don't have an answer on this, is if there was a conflict between what Mr. Gail wanted and what Mr. Mullen recommended, how would we resolve that conflict?
Okay.
So it doesn't become a, you know, an issue where Mr. Gail walks away out of frustration or anger.
You're, you're talking about what percentage?
Well, not a specific number, but that would be something negotiated between Mr. Gail and the town administrator. But what happens if they don't agree?
Right. I guess what I want to know is what, what number are you?
I'm not looking for a number.
Not, not a number.
I'm just looking for.
Right. Um, are you talking about?
A process.
What percentage of the percentage that one would get for, like, Mike would say, you did ten percent of the work, so you're going to get ten percent of the administrative fee?
Well, I think what I heard Mr. Gail said was that he was willing to negotiate that with Mr. Mullen, town administrator. So we didn't need to get into specific numbers.
Right.
That would be something that the two would work out. But if there is a conflict and they don't agree on a number, how do we want to resolve that?
Uh, I think it would go to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes. Mr. Hall, if I, if I can, can answer that a little bit, and I'm going to be.
The chair, please.
It's going to, it's, through the chair, it's going to sound like it being evasive, and it's not going to come out the way I want it to come out. But what I would say is that I think Mr. Mullen and I have a pretty good understanding after having extensive conversation in, in realizing that initially, if I'm involved in writing grants or putting together grants or doing the research for grants and so forth, and we can build an administrative component to it, there's going to be a small percentage of that administrative side. It's not going to be significant, but it's going to be time for doing the work. And that doesn't differentiate much from what's already in agreement. If it turns out that a, a grant needs to be administered by me as the ADA Coordinator primarily, well, that's, that's, that may up a percentage. But again, there's also still going to be, need to be an allocation for other, allocation for other departments who are involved. And the goal here is not to, and I'm going to be very frank, the goal is not to suddenly provide us this enormous influx of dollars for the ADA Coordinator. The goal of this side of it is really to begin to allow the town as well to reimburse different departments for the time and services that their staff are putting in, not only to working on a grant, but to working on different aspects of a grant once a grant is received. And again, this doesn't happen unless a grant is funded. But the goal is to really make sure that different departments get reimbursed for the time that they ultimately have to put into this. And yes, ADA would be part of that, could be, you know, if it's administrated, a significant part. But I don't think that there's going to be a problem with that at this point. And I think this is, to me, that, I can't give you an exact figure. I, I don't think the town administrator can at this point. But I think that we have a pretty good understanding of how to work this out. I'm not going to walk away from any, anything, no matter what. I think all of you know well enough my commitment to anything ADA. So, one way or another, we're going to get it done. And I'm not going to walk away from something, because we're arguing over whether it should be fifteen percent versus twenty-five percent versus forty percent. That's never going to happen, and I can assure you of that.
Right. I'm, I'm sure it won't. Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
We're talking two different things here.
Yep.
You know, other departments, that's a conversation for another time as we talk about a grant approval procedure, other departments. What we're talking about specifically is the ADA Coordinator. What I'd like to see is an, an, an understanding, an agreement, that the town administrator will negotiate with the ADA Coordinator a percentage of the administrative grant as his pay.
Can I just?
And then the second piece, and again, that's up to the board, if they want to put in an appeal process, if the two should happen or to agree.
Mr. Hall, I think through the chair, I think that we, when you say pay, I assume you mean pay related to a grant. And we did that before, several weeks ago. We did come back and we used a figure, for example, of an administrative figure. I think we were talking about point two five and of administrative component. And the board didn't feel comfortable with that, because you felt we should come back and look at it differently. So now we have looked at it differently, and we're trying to come back with something that would be more realistic.
Okay. Mr. Mullen?
And, yeah, like, if I could, from an accounting point of view, like, and it's why, like, in the hours and the hourly rate, uh, uh, yeah, I'm a big believer that words matter. And, like, the structure, and I want to be clear, so the structure that we're proposing is going from what we had at, I'll, like, it's really like a stipend to a per diem hourly rate.
Right.
And so, based on, based on a per diem hourly rate, and I mean inherently to try to come up with a percentage based on that, so, so it's going to be irreconcilable. I think what our responsibility is going to need to be, based on any individual grant that we apply for, we're going to need to budget out how many hours at twenty-five dollars an hour that we expect the ADA Coordinator to be involved in.
Right.
That, from an accounting, from an accounting point of view, I can, the components have left. But we, we don't, we aren't able to pay people, so especially per diem employees, two different ways. And so if we have a per diem hourly rate, we have to, we have to plan and forecast how many hours of administrative, of administrative, of administrative costs are going to be, that are going to be built into the grant in order to fund the per diem, the per diem rate work that the ADA Coordinator is going to do. That, like, I think is the most fair and appropriate way to proceed based on the structure that we're proposing.
Okay. Mrs. Melville, do you have any questions?
A couple of my concerns were addressed. I still have the concern in regards to, I'm looking at this as the ADA Coordinator, not as a Jonathan Gale.
Yes.
So as I say this, I, this is no reflection of Jonathan. It's just when we talk about grants, we. It's just when we talk about grants, we like to talk about, we have grants, look at all this money we got. We don't think about the part that, usually they don't cover all of whatever the project is. I don't want us to get grant happy because there's a dollar number attached to it. And that goes for anyone that was in this position. I want to make sure that we're reaching out for grants that are completely appropriate and that we have a good handle on that. Because without a cap on this, I mean, who knows how far it could go? And that's, that was my biggest concern.
Right. And that's why I had asked earlier who approves the grants that we're going to apply to. And I guess the answer was Mr. Mullen.
And yeah, that had been-
The standard practice.
Yes.
It'd been the practice, and I have, and I mean, again, I mean, just based on what grants take, what grants take to manage. We don't have, we don't have the capacity-
Right.
-to apply for everything we see.
Right.
We do have to be extremely strategic. I can make sure that a grant will either achieve a capital need, an operational need. I would like them to really make sure that a grant will fit our current goals, not even sometimes aspirational goals because of resources, so on capacity, but our current goals as well.
I totally agree. I just would like to see it memorialized in a policy.
Okay.
Rather than, I mean, but that's something for down the road.
Yep.
Right now, we have a proposal in front of us. Would you entertain a motion to approve the job description as presented this evening? Or do you wish to amend it?
No, I'd entertain that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the ADA coordinator job description as presented this evening.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye. All right. Thank you. Let's move on to the warrants, please.
I would like to make a motion to approve the warrants for June 22nd, 2023. Article 51C-23, $37,558.11.
Want to second that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you. Acknowledgements, I don't believe there are any.
No.
Correspondence, an email from Patricia Barlow, resigning from the Dayton Development Industrial Commission. She sent a letter saying, please inform the committee of my resignation. Thank you, Patty. She addressed that to Dan in what dated June 25th.
Ms. Barlow is an original member of DDI C. And I'd like to make a motion to accept her letter of resignation with sincere thanks and appreciation.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you. Acknowledgements, I don't believe there are any.
No.
Correspondence, an email from Patricia Barlow, resigning from the Dayton Development Industrial Commission. She sent a letter saying, please inform the committee of my resignation. Thank you, Patty. She addressed that to Dan in what dated June 25th.
Ms. Barlow is an original member of DDI C. And I'd like to make a motion to accept her letter of resignation with sincere thanks and appreciation.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Letter from William Fontaine, resigning from his position as tenant member within the Dayton Housing Authority. Is there a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation from the, from the position as tenant member within the Dayton Housing Authority of William Fontaine.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye. Letter from the Board of Health, appointment of Jennifer Dotexera as Special Agent for Tobacco Enforcement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer Dotexera as Special Agent for Tobacco Enforcement.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye.
Wait, I have a question.
Sure.
Do I have, am I looking at the wrong agenda? I have like a C and a D. Was that an old agenda?
Um, no, it might be, I have the old agenda in front of me.
C, so yes, so there is a C. That is Jennifer Dotexera. We did have additional piece of correspondence that did come in that's not on the agenda right now.
Right. I don't have that on my agenda, but I thought I was going to get that this evening, but-
The letter is here. We do, I thought it was included in the updated packet, but we do-
Oh, I picked up my packet last night, so.
And do you update a letter? We do have, like, and this was unanticipated, Mr. Chairman.
Right, I understand.
But this morning, we did receive a resignation letter from the Assistant Town Accountant.
Right.
And I did, I addressed to Ms. Brady, please accept this letter as notice on my resignation as Assistant Town Accountant for the town of Dayton. My last day will be July 13th, 2023. I've appreciated the opportunity to work as the Assistant Town Accountant for the town of Dayton over the last two years. I met some great people while working here and will miss the work environment. I've accepted a position that is a better fit for my skills, education, and long-term goals. Sincerely, Lisa DeGages.
Right. Point of order.
Sure.
I'm not saying we can't approve this or ask the town administrator to help us with this procedurally.
Yes.
It is not on our agenda. We received this at the last minute.
Yes.
Technically, is there a way we can approve this without running in our friend?
And yes, it's unanticipated, and it was unanticipated by the chair.
Do we need to motion that, or is that just, we made that declaration and we're good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, this, oh yeah, this, oh yeah, that came in even after we amended the agenda for a second time.
Want to avoid?
Oh yeah, no, no, I understand. But, oh yeah, one of the things that, I actually, the assistant, oh yeah, the current assistant town accountant, Lisa DeGages, who's been with us just over two years now, she, I have been incredible. And one of the lines, and I take employee morale, I can, I employee culture presumably seriously. I know that was referenced early in the meeting as well. But the fact that our current assistant town accountant says that she has met some great people while working here, I can will miss the work environment. Oh yeah, in my view, that says everything to me. That's, like, if we don't have that type of town hall culture, town hall employee engagement environment, we don't have anything. And I just want to, and I just want to make note of that. We do, I, if, like, if the board, if the board would consider, based on the importance of the position, we would, I'd like to post the vacancy as soon as possible. So we, so we, so we can plan for some continuity there.
Sure. I've always said, if you take care of your employees, they'll take care of everything else. And the fact that, like you just said, that she was going to miss the culture here at the town hall, the work environment says a lot for what happens at the town hall.
And yeah, and Lisa especially, she held the town accountant's office together through not one, but two town accountant transitions. And one happened, the first one happened just a month and a half into her actually coming to Dayton. And we, oh yeah, like she's been incredible, and I just want to recognize that. Because when we hire people, we pride ourselves on, so hiring people who will step up when we need it. And, oh yeah, and she did, and she, oh yeah, and yeah, it's meant everything, so.
Good. Thank you. You have something, Mr. Hall?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need two motions here. The first one, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Assistant Town Accountant, Lisa DeGages, with sincere thanks and appreciation for their last day being July 13th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye.
And the second motion is I would like to make a motion that we post the position of Assistant Town Accountant for the town of Dayton. How long, dates, times? One month, two weeks?
We have a policy that we post that minimum for two weeks.
Speaking of-
It will be in line with our hiring policy.
Starting tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, as long as we have the ability to post it tomorrow, if we ever create a date tomorrow, yes.
Post it for a two-week period?
Right.
And they should submit their applications to, Mrs. Karen Brady or the town clerk's office?
The, I'm actually, actually, Ms. Cohen. All the applications are collected by Ms. Cohen. We have that, I can, the application procedures, and then, and then we go from there.
So make that in the form of motion, we post that position.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, we have before us this evening a letter of resignation from the town clerk. He's an elected official, so I don't believe we have the jurisdiction to vote on that. Am I correct?
We have to, I, I, this is another unanticipated item. I would actually recommend that the board vote to accept the resignation because then the board will become the appointing authority for the interim town clerk. And, but in order to appoint an interim, you have to, you have to acknowledge and accept the resignation that will then allow the board to appoint an interim.
Now, have we already posted that position?
We have.
Okay.
Based on the discussion, because of the anticipated vacancy that was discussed at the last meeting. So we're accepting, we're accepting applications to close the business tomorrow.
Would you have any objections if I read this letter?
No, right or wrong.
He did a fine job. And I would just like to add, as he mentions in the letter, it was a life-changing opportunity. And it was an incredible increase in pay. I have received a job offer in a neighboring municipality that I hope will be life-changing. As they say, I have to do what is best for my family. I can tell you sincerely that this is much easier said than done. And I am so sad to leave my job as town clerk. My last day as town clerk will be July 9th, 2023. I have had a wonderful experience in Dayton. In the past 28 months, we have professionalized and improved the town clerk's office in many ways. All members of the town clerk's office were appointed by the governor to become commissioners to qualify public offices, allowing us to add the new service of administering the oath of office to known republics and other elected state officials. I added the capability to take online payments. My office added election information in a calendar phone directory in our census mailings, getting the word out about town elections and information on the elected positions available in town. We procured and installed a mailbox for the town clerk and treasurer-collector. I proudly secured money from the CPC to preserve some of the town's vital records in which a contract was just executed. My office, thanks to, thanks to the support of the voters, procured new State of the YDS 200 ballot scanners from ESNS, replacing our vintage AccuVote scanners. We have put as much information on the town's website as possible with transparency and ease of access to information being our number-one goal. We audited all local vets and worked with the state veterinarian and her staff to increase state mandated reporting of rabies vaccines given to any dogs who live in town. And we have followed up with those residents. The town seal, this town seal press, SIRSA, 1912, 1913, used daily in my office for over a century, was officially retired with a new historically accurate replacement. And most recently, my office has purchased three new patriotic polling booths to be used in all future elections, which will allow for a wheelchair accessible, allow for a wheelchair-accessible voting booth in each precinct, increasing accessibility for our voters. I have faith the town clerk's office will continue to make improvements for our residents and wish the best of luck to the next clerk and assistant town clerk. I will be there to help in any way that I can. Dayton is a special, unique, and resilient town, and it has been an honor of a lifetime to work alongside a hard-working, dedicated staff, election workers, elected officials, and residents who make Dayton surely the best place to live. Sincerely, Mark L. Pacheco. With that being said, I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Pacheco's resignation with sincere thanks and appreciation.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you for reading that one. On to minutes, approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of June 14th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of June 14th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Time for public input. Is there any, yes, Miss Gulat?
I don't want to miss Nancy's public input, but I have something I'm in my eye.
Okay.
And I have to- It won't suck. Sorry, Nancy. But who wants to run?
Nancy Gulat, 631 Great Terrace. I'm here tonight making another plug, a reminder for the PMC Jimmy Fund Bike Ride, first Saturday, Sunday in August. I think it's August the 5th that they will be coming through Dayton this year. I did want to just clarify or give some additional information. When you had the discussion earlier with the finance committee, and yes, there was funds needed in the Board of Assessors' office, and yes, there is a procedure in place. The problem was the retirement that was unanticipated, so it was not budgeted for in the annual budget. We didn't know about it until after the fall town meeting, so we couldn't get funding there.
Right.
So what we did was, when I was made aware of it, I immediately got in touch with Mr. Ferry and said, what do we got in stormwater? And do you have money in highway? Because I knew we hadn't spent all the stormwater money. And this was after the calendar year had ended and we were into the next year. And we weren't anticipating big expenses. And because there had been some turnover in the highway department, he hadn't spent all his money for salaries. So that's how we covered the money we needed, and I'm guessing it was somewhere around $15,000, to pay out earned benefits of a retiree. So even though the procedure was in place, when something like that happens, you've got to pay it. It's an earned benefit. So the, so the procedure, if we had, if we had anticipated that timely, we could have gone to the fall town meeting and said, we need X to increase the salary line because we have a pending retirement. So I just wanted to clarify that. And the money was there simply because of the reasons I gave you. It, we didn't over, we didn't pad the budget in anticipation of anything. As a matter of fact, once I got the information from the employee and talked to Tommy, I went right to Mr. Mullen and says, we got a problem, but I think we got it covered. So anyhow, that's how we ended up taking care of that. Because I know there were questions about, how are you taking it out of stormwater? This person's an assessor. And I said, municipal finance allows us to do this. But the main thing is, we can take care of this and not have a deficit in the Board of Assessors' budget
And Tommy was okay with it.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Ferry, I call him my budget director for stormwater. But also, I knew because there has been turnover in the highway department, and there's always a time period when you have to interview, you know, so that time you're not paying out wages, so the other thing. The other thing I have is a request. Whether it's dark or whether it's daylight, and notice this when you walk out tonight, when you open that outside door, if you look down, the threshold blends in with the floor. I'm asking that something be done to that threshold, whether it's painted yellow with black stripes or a permanent tape, something be put down there. Because when I was going out, I opened the door and somebody was standing there, and I said, it's hard to see the threshold, and I looked, I said, you're right. So it's the color of the wood. It all blends, and you don't see that. We're used to it, but it could be a public problem.
I think that's an easy fix.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen, can we just have?
Yes, absolutely. That's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public input? Mr. Woods?
No, I think that's just a green spot on the screen now.
Okay. Then, hearing the other, motion for the adjournment?
To adjourn.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Hall? No? Okay. Then we just need a vote, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You okay?
Yeah.